In order, please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks for coming, everybody, on this hot day, hot summer day. We're into summer, that's for sure. That's for sure. Okay, roll call.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Maureen Borey.
Absent excuse.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Chris Oregan.
Absent excuse.
Cindy Valentine here.
All right. Got two of us playing hooky. No, they're not. First thing on the agenda, we got a long meeting tonight, but that's okay, a lot of positive stuff. We got a couple presentations, and first is TriHospital EMS, I think Ken, right?
That would be me.
When I come up and...
Well, good evening, everybody. It's been a while since I've been here, and it's good to see all of you again. I wanted to just take a minute and share with you a little bit about the ambulance millage that is on the August 2nd primary ballot. We have asked the Board of Commissioners if they would support and place on the ballot a half mil millage for the provision of ambulance service. That millage translates into a home valued at roughly $200,000, but taxable value of about $100,000 would cost individual about $50 per year. The reason for, and that is for a four-year period if approved by the voters, and it would have to be renewed or eliminated in a four-year period. As you know, we have provided service to Clay Township and this Down River area for a number of years, I don't even know exactly how many years, but TriHospital EMS has been around, excuse me, for about 38 years now. And when the organization was first created back in the mid-'80s, the whole basis for the financial planning, or the financial plan for operating the organization, was based on the assumption that if a single provider had enough of the market share, the economies of scale that they would generate through that, and the volumes that would come with that, would generate enough revenue to support the infrastructure that it takes to provide ambulance services, really on a countywide basis. And, you know, for the most part, we have met that obligation for the past 38 years. We really have not utilized any supplemental funding through government organizations, no subsidies, no millages, things of that nature. Now, there was a short period of time back in the '80s and '90s where the county, through the Board of Commissioners, did allocate a small subsidy for the provision of ambulance services, but that went away in the early 2000s when their budgets got tight and those funds were no longer available. So really, since the early 2000s, we have operated with no supplemental income, and we've managed to operate the ambulance service, for the most part, on a fee-for-service basis. What's led us to where we're at today is a number of, a couple of years ago, really even before the pandemic hit, although I will tell you that the pandemic really did exacerbate the problem, the financial problem that we face today in service delivery. But even before that, we began to see that the revenues were not keeping pace with the expenses. And really, what I'm talking about is primarily the government payer sources, Medicare, Medicaid. They comprise about 90% of our revenue. Those are the sources in which we derive our revenues from. And, you know, unfortunately, Medicare and Medicaid have not kept their reimbursement levels anywhere close to what it actually costs to provide the service. And we could move things around, and quite frankly, we funded our organization, I guess I'm going to say this, on the backs of our employees for a long time, by not giving them sufficient wages, by not giving them sufficient pay raises and things of that nature, because the dollars we had to work with were very limited. Just by way of example, in the Medicaid program along, which is a Michigan program, is funded through the Michigan Legislature and the Michigan Treasury, until last September, last September we got a small increase from the state in Medicaid reimbursement rates. Prior to that increase, ambulance service had not received an increase in 20 years. So we went 20 years of providing service and had never received any increase in the amount of reimbursement that the state pays for Medicaid customers. And as you can imagine, costs have gone up significantly over a 20-year period, and quite frankly, over the last six to 12 months, costs have soared even greater for our organization. Healthcare providers and ambulance services is a part of that. We have absolutely no ability to recover those increase in costs through charging more. It doesn't matter whether you're a private company, not-for-profit like us, or if you're a municipally-based service, the reimbursements for ambulance services are identical. And so it really doesn't matter about the structure of the organization, but the bottom line is that if the cost of milk goes up to your local grocer, they generally increase that, the cost of that, onto the consumer who buys the milk, so that they don't take a loss on it. In the ambulance business, we don't have that ability. When costs go up, we have to find ways to cut service, because we don't have the ability to charge that, the increase, those increase in costs onto the people who utilize the service, simply because our payments are fixed by the government payers, for the most part. So we're really locked in, in terms of how we can finance our organization. Couple of things from an expense standpoint, aside from all of the issues that I'm sure all of you are well aware of, in terms of fuel prices and grocery prices and things of that nature, some of the things that we're dealing with, like many employers are, is just an incredible staffing shortage. Ambulance service is a regulated industry in the state of Michigan, and that means that people who work for an ambulance service must be licensed, they must be certified, and that takes a lengthy period of time for us to do that. Back in July of 2020, the community college up in Port Huron, who had been providing much of, really all of the paramedic training program for St. Clair County, decided to get out of that business, and they simply shut down their program, which left us with no recruits within the county, and that forced us to go out into the southeast Michigan marketplace to try to recruit personnel to come and join our company, to fill our turnovers of personnel. What we found pretty quickly was that our wages up here are significantly lower than what the market is supporting in the metropolitan Detroit area. Unfortunately, with a limited amount of revenue available, we really couldn't meet and match those wages down there, and so we are struggling right now with trying to find personnel. So really, this millage will do a couple of things for us that I think will significantly benefit the citizens that we serve. The first thing we want to do with the millage dollars is to get our wages up. We estimate, based on our market research, that we're about 17% what the market is supporting for wages for EMS people today. So we need to use those funds, number one, to get our wages up to a competitive level so that we can retain our current workforce, but also go out into the marketplace and recruit new people to come up and to fill the vacancies that we have within our organization. The second thing that we need to do is, at the same time all this is going on, and this is very complex, and I don't want to sound like I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth here, but demand for ambulance service is actually going up. It's not going down. And you would think that with demand going up, our revenues should be going up commensurate with that. They are not. What we're finding is that the demand, the increase in demand that we're experiencing are generally non-payable types of runs. They are cell phone calls, that people see a car go in the ditch, they dial 911, we have to respond to it, nobody's injured. We generate no revenue from that. But we still have to have the resources available to respond to that, and so we have to staff accordingly to make sure that we have resources available. Lift assists for senior citizens, that's another really big one. People fall in their home, they don't want to go to the hospital, but they need assistance in getting up. Chief Rose can vouch for me on this, that that's a significant increase in utilization of resources right now that's out there. Again, these are non-revenue-producing types of runs. There's no bills, there's no revenue generated from that. So one of the things we need to do is, we need to have funds so that we can not only pay our people better, but so that we can add resources to the community. We need additional coverage to help meet this growing demand for ambulance services. More people are calling 911 today than they ever have before. And then the third thing that we need to do, that these funds would be utilized for, is, as I said earlier, the community college dropped its training program back in 2020. We need to beef up our training program, and we need to get into the training program business, which we are doing right now, but that comes at a significant cost to us, in hiring staff, and hiring, having the necessary facilities in which to support that. But we believe firmly that the best strategy for us is to train our own people from within the county and have them come to work for us, rather than rely solely on recruiting outside of the organization. And those are really the primary issues that we face right now, that these funds would be used for, to keep ambulance service continuing and moving forward. We absolutely have every intention of putting an additional ambulance down in this area, down here in this market. I'm not sure if it'll be a 24-hour ambulance, but at least a 12-hour ambulance. And essentially, our Clay Township car, which we have over a Muscat run over here, and our Ira Township car, support Algonac, Clay, and Ira, we believe we need a third vehicle somewhere down in this area, whether it's in the city of Algonac or somewhere else, I'm not sure exactly where yet, but to kind of help carry some of that overload that we're experiencing here, as well as in some of our other markets. So we really feel that's an important strategy in use of these funds, if the voters would support it. So that's a really fast, and I know you've got a busy agenda tonight, but I just want, that's kind of my overview of where we're at right now. I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you have about this, but we really would appreciate the support of the citizens of Clay Township. We, as I said, we've served your community for a number of years. We have an excellent relationship with your fire department and your police department, work very closely on the major events down here, Joby Noonar and the Raftoff, and Pepperell Tournament in Algonac, and just a number of events that we interact with our partners down here very well. And we hope that you'll allow us to continue to serve the citizens of Clay Township and support us, so we can keep our ambulance service stable here in the county.
Thank you, Ken. I got a couple of questions, if I may. First of all, I think you guys do one heck of a job. I mean, when, if someone has to call 911, I've said it many times, they're not having a good day.
Nope.
And, you know, and you guys show up and, you know, you're kind of dealt with the car, or you're working with the cars you're dealt with. So I get that 100%, and I was going to ask you about the better coverage, so probably have some type of a floater car or...
Yeah, and typically right now, I didn't mean to interrupt, Artie, but typically what we do right now, if our Clay Township ambulance goes out on a run, we take our Ira car, we move it to an area, Cheyenne, Starville, I think many of you probably know that, it's pretty common. And the reason we do that is because it's kind of halfway between Ira and Clay, but that, you know, what we want to do is to have another vehicle in this area so that we don't have to pull that car out of Ira Township, and the same thing goes with Clay Township, if the Ira car goes. So yeah, we would have some type of a floater car that would be down in this area.
And I can vouch for all the lift assists and people with mental issues. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff where I know you're not getting paid for making the runs, I get that, but, you know, like you say, you gotta go.
Yeah.
About what percentage is Medicare?
So in our organization, Medicare comprises about just shy of 60% of all of the runs. It's incredibly high. Senior citizens are the largest users of healthcare services. In our organization, as I said, Medicare is about 60% of our patient volume, and Medicaid, I believe, is right around 28%. So it's Medicare and Medicaid comprise the bulk of our payments.
Yeah.
They're very large.
Okay, and I know we've talked about it before and everything. I seriously think the county dropped the ball on this. I think the county should have made an authority that covers the whole county.
Yeah.
And they just do it and provide, because the way it stands now, we're going to have to cut a contract with you.
Right.
You're going to have to cut one with Algonac, with all the municipalities throughout the whole...
Twenty-seven of them, to be exact.
I was just going to ask you. I was guessing 31.
Yeah.
And, see, I know you're going to capture about a little over 250 grand from Clay.
Right.
So it's, you know, and your job is to make a system that works best for the whole county, and that should be the county's...
Right.
...thing, too. So I just wish that they would have created an authority for those.
So oddly enough, Artie, I actually agree with you. And you may recall, last summer, I came down and met with you here in your office.
Yeah, I was one of the first ones.
And when this, when we started down this path, in fact, let me just tell you this, that one of the things my Board of Directors said to me was, go out and meet with the local communities, find out what they want. And really, what I shared with many of the elected officials, I met with the Supervisors Association and the MTA group, I said to them at that time, a year ago, that TriHospital will step aside if the county wants to create an authority, if the county wants to be in the ambulance business. And there just was no stomach for it at all. No one wanted to step up. I met with the Board of Commissioners, they wanted absolutely nothing to do with it. Now, the reason the ballot language ended up, I wasn't really happy with the ballot language, I'll be honest with you, but the reason we ended up with the language the way it was, where the tax dollars are approved, are collected, and then dispersed back to the local communities, is because one of the municipalities in the county was not happy with the way the county dispersed parks and recreation millages, and therefore, they did not want the county to have any involvement in dispersing the funds. They wanted all the money to go back to their municipality, and then they would use it for their EMS provider, and quite frankly, they provide their own ambulance service through their fire department. I won't mention the name, but you can probably guess. So we really had no choice but to support that language the way it was. But I, and I will say this much, Artie, I'm still not convinced that that strategy is off the table.
Right.
I mean, I still think that as a county, we're far better off looking at the whole picture than we are individual pockets of it. And so I would actually support that.
Right.
Because I've always said, ambulance service in this county has to be delivered as a single system. If it isn't, it will cost a whole lot more than a half a mil. Trust me on that.
Right.
If each individual municipality tries to do it, it will cost significantly more than if we do it as a shared service throughout the whole county, which is what we've tried to do.
Anybody have any questions for Ken?
Thank you very much, you guys. I appreciate it very much. And again, thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, good seeing you.
You bet.
Thank you.
All right, next we have County Parks Services. Presentation.
Got lots of presentations today.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I appreciate you taking the time. My name's Melissa Hanners, and I am on the County Parks and Rec Board, and we are going for, excuse me, a renewal on August 2nd. So just to briefly go over what's happened the last six years since the original, Parks and Recs has done a lot with the current parks that we currently have. We have distributed 25% of all millage funds to the 33 local units of government over the last six years totaling over $4 million. St. Clair County is one of the only Michigan counties that distributes their funds back to the locals in that way. In addition, we've worked with communities to provide canoe kayak launches, dog parks, land acquisitions, supported trail development and maintenance, and help to install multipurpose sports courts. The flyer that I have here really details out a lot about the parks and what has been done in the individual parks, so I'm not going to take your time reading through all that in there. What I really want to talk about is what's happening now and where we're going in the future with this. So right now, construction's complete for the replacement at Goodles County Splash Pad, so that's been completely redone and updated. We're seeking community input and final concept plans for the North Channel development down here. We're looking, we just hired a new Parks Executive Director, Nancy Winsner, and she's completing her first year of doing that. We've moved the park office from the county board in the center of Port Huron out to Goodles Park, so it's nice to go out there and see all that. Brings everybody to one location, makes it much easier to kind of manage everything that's going on. Just like anybody else, we're having trouble hiring seasonal help, maintaining the parks has been a difficulty this year, but we are, we are working on that and getting through that, they're coming up with some inventive things. We're glad to bring some events back after all the shutdowns. So Sandfest is going on, August 5th to the 7th. We finished restoration of the Tower Watch and Lantern Room at Fort Grashet Light Station. We've partnered with the Friends of St. Clair River, lots of things that they're doing up there, that's a wonderful organization that's helping us out with volunteers. Columbus County Park now has finished the nine-hole disc golf course out there, looking to add the other nine in the next year. And installation of drinking fountains and bottle fill stations at the Wadams to Avoca Trail. If you're on the trail development, they are still working on the Bridge to Bay Trail all the way through, so that's coming along. We just found out there's some pieces that were missing that are going to come into play here. What's coming next, continue to plan for the development of North Channel County Park. So that's our big focus right now, is looking at developing that, maintain and improve all our parks to the level of quality that they are. We're really focusing on partnering with cities, villages, and townships to take advantage of grant opportunities. So we've put a lot of focus there to come down, and Nancy's been meeting with people, like, how can we help our locals secure grant funding, because it's hard to do it on your own? So how can we come under one umbrella to get some of that grant money and disperse it out to some of the projects?
We want to apply for the Spark Grant for exercise equipment, outdoor exercise equipment.
Right, and I know they're having a meeting, you know, with all the different people coming up, like how, and using our county grant writer to help. A lot of times when you put in those grants, if you put them in under the county, for larger funds, you have a much better chance of receiving them than individual locals. So the Millage Renewal vote is August 2nd. This is a renewal, it will not, it will not change anything that's already in place as of now, so. Any questions for me?
Questions from Melissa? Ken?
I want to, I'll leave these flyers down here for you, just in case anybody wants to...
All right. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have Bills Payable. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of $19,742.62.
Okay, motion, support, and discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Okay, motion passes. Next, we're rolling into the Supervisor's Report. It's a little long today, and I know it's everyone's highlight of the meeting, but we'll get right into it. Yeah, lots of stuff going on. It's all good. Frag Myte's program is back, I mentioned that last meeting. We do have the chemicals in, and so if anyone's interested, contact Cindy Babish at the building department, and we can get things moving there. Excuse me, lots of blight and building issues, as always. We sent a lot of letters out about high grass and cut some grass and lawns, and please, people, cut your grass. We don't want to be in the grass cutting business. Rather have compliance and tickets on all building and blight issues. We do have some things, dangerous buildings coming down the pipe and in court and everything. In fact, we got one tonight, so. This year's budget is done. It was challenging, I won't lie. Explained before how general township millage rates work with the Headley Amendment. It keeps us cash neutral. In other words, as our taxable values go up, our millage is actually reduced. And, you know, I say that, but people don't, you know, okay, sure, what's that mean? In fact, I just did a few numbers, I just stumbled upon a budget in 2009. We actually received $2,000 more in property taxes in 2009 than we are this coming year. I mean, that's just the way it works. And, you know, like the parks and everybody else is challenging, that's for sure. And I can contest, we have a lot more services that we offer now than was offered in 2009. Back then, our office was only open 32 hours a week. We didn't have a Parks and Rec program, and Music in the Park, and a lot of other programs. So I'm really proud of the job our administrators have been doing and our office people. We cut, you know, and the department heads, we do a phenomenal job of cutting costs. That's the only way we can keep it going. Met with the Road Commission last week, Anchor Bay Drive scheduled to be repaved seven, next week, the week of 7/25. And Harson's Island and the Phelps work will be done towards the end of August, early September. The Road Commission, their federal funds have been getting cut, believe it or not. Everyone says all this federal money floating around, but they're, they had grants, they get grants, and instead of being paid like 80 or 60% of a project that's federally funded, they're getting paid like 30 or 40% of that job. So they're getting whacked, and they, the Road Commission actually did not receive any ARPA money. So I was warned that some of the programs we take advantage of through our local, our county road commission may disappear. And like right now, every, if we do a major road project, you know, it's supposed to be every other year, but we've been getting it every year, we can get $50,000 matching funds towards that project. That might not be here next year. And with this budget, you know, it's the first year that, since I've been here, we have not done a road project. My costs, or my question to you, and I've got, I've asked for an estimate, I haven't got it, the next road really on the long list to be repaved should probably be Fruit Road, and is that something the Board might want to entertain? We'd have to amend the budget to do that. Like I say, I don't have the cost yet. When I do, I'll present it to the Board for consideration. Just think about it. If not, if we wait a year or two, you know, we may be passing up on the 50 grand. Joe Char, oh, I just got more information, you know, they had a, they want to repave the road, it's a private road, we're going to do it through special assessment. Then we discovered there's a problem with the sewer line towards the end of the road, big dip in the road if you go down there. And, you know, I kind of eyeballed it, it looked like about 80 foot of, the sewer line runs right down the middle of the road. So it'd be ludicrous if we had them do a paving job and then go behind it and rip out the road out to fix the sewer line, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. At Project Control, you know, I was eyeballing about 80 feet where the dip is. At Project Control Engineering, do some investigation, the sewer line actually starts dropping right at the manhole, and they're talking about replacing 245 feet of sewer. So this is going to be a considerably bigger job than I was hoping for. And then part of it, where this road that was constructed used to be a canal, and they actually did a soil sample and shot a camera down there, there's a river running underneath the road. You know, I don't know how deep it is, under the road, and that's where the big dip is, so we may have to put a seawall in there or something. They're working it out right now. I'm hoping to get some guestimates on the fix and everything else. I just want to warn the Board that that's going to be a hot topic, and we're, I'm meeting with Project Control to see the best way to handle it. We'll probably have to go out to bid to fix the sewer part of it, and then do the repaving after that, which the Joe Char would be, you know, the special assessment would be responsible for. To be continued. I actually, I received a to-do list for our $1 million grant that we received to fix our sewer interceptor, and I'll be starting now, well, I just start a little bit today. Met with Comcast, we have three or four streets, there's no broadband service. Swore it off Starville, Marl Road, and a few other places. And this is even before COVID started. We wanted to do some research about bringing broadband out there. And we first got, our first guestimate, estimate from Comcast, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to do it all. Got the email. Said, great, let's work on this. Well, after waiting two years and doing, oh, a survey and everything, they told me that the job will now cost three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, and the township share would be two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. That's a considerable jump from the one fourteen.
To be clear, Artie, the two years difference in time wasn't on our end, it was on their end.
It was their end, yes. No, we wanted, we were all happy with the one fourteen, get her done. But, yeah, it was dragged out, you know, COVID is an excuse for everything nowadays and everything else. So I'm going to be talking to a few of the people if they want to do a, split it between a township project and a special assessment, or we have the option of just waiting, because there is money available through the state for doing these projects. They're supposed to have a map where all the voids are, and I'm not sure how the state's going to prioritize it or anything else yet. I kind of promised, I told these people we're working on, we're working on, and then, you know, we hit a roadblock not to anything that we wanted. And so it, I did request a map exactly what houses and what properties they're going to serve, and that would help us out with the special assessment if we choose to go that way. So, yeah, we're definitely working on it. Let's see, not much new. We call it the CIA Authority, the Clay, Ira Elgynack Sewer Authority. CIA is kind of catchy, easy to remember. Not much new on that, waiting on Ira to come up with a withdrawal clause, and we're waiting on information for the county. We actually had a meeting scheduled last week, but because we didn't have any new information, we postponed it. Met with FEMA. The new flood maps went into effect today. The good news is that they reduced the actual floodplain area a little bit, removing a hundred and thirty-seven structures in the township. And they have a new flood zone called the VE Zone. Velocity, I'm not sure what E stands for, but it takes in consideration wind-blown water rise, like, it would affect Anchor Bay Drive, and if you're out on Mussum Bay, any of the bays where you have a lot of wave action. And there's only actually four structures in the township that are in that, that new zone. Good news is FEMA did restructure their rates, I'm told, and they created a Great Lakes Zone. And it more typical, typical, tippler, ah, what's another word? It more resembles our risk to flooding versus what they see down in Louisiana and along the Atlanta coast. Not quite there yet, but there's been a lot of reduction in rates. I did talk to a gal on Harson's Island. Her rates actually reduced fifty percent. FEMA always says they're going to send us a link to the new flood zone map, so you can put in your address and see exactly where you're at. But I did not get that forwarded to us yet. When I do, I will get it out there and share it out with you. Did, was at a meeting with the County Parks and Rec, twice, actually. We met about the county beach park, the North Channel project, moving forward with the engineering and design. And they reviewed all the environmental studies and other studies from nearby property, and are convinced that there's no contamination concerns. There was some talk about doing a marine traffic study and wave action study. I've been going there certain times and days and taking pictures, and this is the boats that are out in the river. I don't know how you do a traffic study. There was still no information yet on the, for the public information meeting that was postponed. We had a water leak on the island, and it was under the floor in a water station at Harson's Island, and that's owned by the Harson's Island St. Clair Flats Association, and it supplies wa, drinking water to people that aren't hooked up to our municipal water system. And it, it had to be, they had to close, actually, close the water station down for a couple weeks till repairs are done. In the meantime, there is a water, a place to fill up your water, to grab municipal water at the end of Bay, or beginning of Bates Drive, right at the Y. And I know we did make some arrangement with some bulk water users to get their stuff fixed, but kudos to the wire department. That was a tough job and handled it well. They didn't have to shut the whole island off for water service, and that was my first concern. We got some new businesses opening up in Clay, which is always exciting. Bluewater Urgent Care, right on M-29 down the road, is Dr. Chung's old office, if you know what that is. And it was funny, I had an ear thing going, and I said, I'm going to stop in and welcome them. I was actually their first patient. And, yeah, sign right here and get you in there. So it was, it was good. Scoreboards and More is moving to Clay Township, and Emile's Enterprises, CPA, they are moving in M-29. And also, this is, this is fun. There's been a film project on and off from a local guy I know well about Marl Road. That's the name of the movie, The Marl Road. And he's got financing, and they're starting to do the shoot this fall, September and October. So we're going to have a movie production here and shot in the area. I know they, they're using a house in Elginak. They're going to be doing different parts of this movie in different places, so they're building the set out in the country, and way cool. Okay, let's see, what else? Scheduling for fall, yeah, we're trying to get a second date for fall cleanup. It's actually on the agenda. M-Terris having a hard time providing us with containers for it, and so I reached out to MG, is it MGM Containers? I got a quote in there as an agenda item, we'll wait for that. And as I mentioned, found a possible grant for our outdoor exercise equipment in the park, which I want to research heavily. Music in the Park's going strong. We had one, our first concert last week at the Clay Park. Elginak, we had five over there, moved here, we got four more to go. This Thursday, we have Detroit Blues Club with Jim McCarty. This guy is a fantastic guitar player. He, he was the, he's one of the best guitar players in the country. He used, he played guitars with Mitch Ryder and the Detroit Wheels for years and years and years, and we're going to have him here on our stage Thursday. And Friday, we're in, on the island, and I think we have Gypsy and the Rockers, don't we, Cindy?
Yes.
Friday, and that starts at six thirty?
Yes.
Six thirty. And it goes to Mosquito Thirty. Over at Brownsville on Harson's Island. See, a lot of cool stuff happened since we met last. We had an anti-poach show, the Pickle Tournament. Lions did a fantastic job, by the way. Our unsanctioned Javi Noonar event. We had, Javi Noonar was way down, wasn't it? Usually, we have about eight thousand, ten thousand boats, well, there might have been two thousand boats there, and we were bracing for, for the worst, because, you know, it was nice weather, and I think we only had two or three runs, didn't we? Two runs? And, you know, usually we have fifteen. So the only thing I can think of is price of gas is keeping some away, but lots of Parks and Rec stuff to do if you're bored. It's not, it's your fault, it's not our fault. As we got tons of stuff to do. All right, that concludes the supervisor's report. Next, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, moving right along. We have the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the minutes from the board meeting of six twenty twenty-two, six thirty twenty-two. Treasurer Hilton's MMTA Fall Conference for three fifty-nine plus hotel, check reports, and that's all.
We have motion and support. Any questions or anything with the consent agenda as presented? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Fire Department Chief's Report. Chief George Rose. Busy man.
Good evening. Chief's report for June twenty twenty-two. I attended two meetings in the month of June. That was the St. Clair Flats Association and also the St. Clair County Chiefs Association. General business was discussed at both. Fireboat One is, the motor was repaired and it's back in service. We put it in the water and it's back in service. Javi Noonar was quite quiet this year. We had about fifteen to two thousand boats around the island. Responded to two minor injuries, which was pretty low, thank God. I would like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Bryson for allowing us to use their property for staging area, and also Todd Chartier for allowing us to launch a couple personal watercrafts on his property. Also, the Clay Township Police Department and St. Clair County Dispatch for their services. Outstanding job. I'm working with St. Clair County Emergency Management and the U.S. Coast Guard on a spill prevention program. If we get a spill in the river, we're going to be the first line of defense of deploying booms. We have some important waterways in our township, the Crispin Drain for one, along with the Canoe Cut and some others that are very important to us, that we need to protect. So I'm working with them on getting spill or boom, booming that we can deploy, and we'll have a plan together.
Yeah, what we want to do, if there's a spill, we want to be able to deploy these booms quick. And we want things, okay, we're going to tie it here, here, boom, and go to the next, you know, try to get the oil or whatever it is, chemical or whatever it is, not into our marshes and our sensitive areas. Get it, get it out, pass, and Chiefs and Emergency Management's got a really good plan to do that. So we'll have the boom here on standby and ready to deploy if needed.
We'll have it on both sides, the mainland and the island. The Coast Guard identified certain areas that we need to pay close attention to in case there is a spill. Fire Department also is working, getting geared up for the Fourth of July. We did assist Elginak with the fireworks standby. We took the barge up to the city park. Also, we'll be working with the St. Clair County Marine Division and the Coast Guard this month on Raftoff. So hopefully you didn't jinx this, Artie.
That's right.
I also would like to thank the Harson's Island Ferry, the captains and deckhands for their prompt and action in getting our emergency vehicles across the, to the island and back, back and forth, so, and really appreciate it. All our vehicles, or I should say, all the fire department equipment is in service. So, that's it.
Thanks, Chief.
I was just looking at your call volume. You had a hundred and fifty-seven calls this past month?
Yep.
Five of them were fires?
Yep.
So you do put fires out?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I know it.
That's what those new trailer trucks are for.
Yes, with those new trucks. Well, they must be working.
Yes, they are.
Any questions for Chief?
Good job.
Yeah, good job. Busy guy. All right, rolling into new business. Set a public hearing for our, our police fire garbage mills. And we're looking at, where's the date?
Make a motion to set the public hearing date for August fifteenth for police, fire, and garbage mills.
Support.
Yeah, support. We have motion and support. The mills are not, are staying the same. Believe me, we could use a little bit more money, but my thinking is, I think the board's thinking is that people are having a hard enough time filling their cars up with gas and their grocery carts. So we're proposing everything to stay the same. Actually, general, what we received in our general got whacked to point five oh nine one. But we have motion and support for the public hearing on August fifteenth. Any discussion? Tell me to shut up. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have Resolution twenty twenty-two fifteen, zoning map amendment. This was passed by our planning commission, and then it goes to the county for their deliberation, which you have all their, the info. And they passed it and advised us that they have no issues, and now it's before our board. It, it is in the master plan to become commercial. Right now, it's R-one, and it's going to C Street.
And we've had extensive review on this, and I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution two zero two-two dash one five, zoning map amendment, rezoning R-one to C-three on property seven four dash one four six one eight zero zero seven three dash zero zero zero.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next, we have the Elginak Baptist Church requesting a permit for fireworks. This is a yearly thing. They do it on, out on Marsh Road. I call it the old drive-in Passion Pit property. They have a barbecue out there and fireworks.
I'll make a motion to approve the fireworks for the Elginak Baptist Church located at eight five four three Marsh Road for Monday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, motion and support. So we're going to have fireworks for our public hearing.
This is annual thing.
Yeah, I know. I know. Okay. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have TPW Purchase Water Meters, and I, I did mention this, it was coming to us. July first, we got a memo that our water meters are going up thirty percent. And we had budgeted in our budget the purchase of a bunch of one-inch, one-and-a-half-inch, and two-inch water meters. And basically, I And basically, I told Lance, let's get it done. I think I sent an email to you guys. I didn't hear any objections. We saved thirty-three thousand dollars by ordering them June thirtieth versus in July. So, but this is asking board approval to make the purchases.
I'll make a motion to approve the oversized water meter purchase for one hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-four cents from line item five nine one nine seven one.
Mark.
Okay, motion and support. Like I said before, it saved us thirty-three thousand, so. Any discussion?
You can see the email was sent out to us on June twenty-ninth at nine oh four P.M.
Yeah, I know. Nine o'clock at night, we're emailing, we got to do this tomorrow.
Here's today's prices and here's tomorrow's prices.
Yeah, here's today's, here's tomorrow. It's thirty-three thousand dollars.
Wow.
Roll call, please.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes. All right, next we have, I should just read the agenda then. Sewer manhole riser rings to purchase. Five thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. This is to raise up the manholes so we can get ready for the paving of Anchor Bay Drive. We don't want every manhole to have a two and a half inch dip, three inch dip.
Make a motion to approve the DPW sewer manhole riser rings for Anchor Bay Drive in the amount of five thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-four cents from line five ninety nine seven to one.
Support.
Okay, motion and lots of support. Any discussion?
Did you ever see the one over on the corner by the post office on the island?
Oh, yeah.
On the island, did you call us?
Yeah, then when it rains, you have water sitting on there, which isn't good for, well, that's not a sewer one, but.
Yeah. The problem with sewer ones, you have water sitting on all of them and it gets infiltration, too.
So, okay, we have motion and support. Roll call, please.
It's only five thousand.
Oh, yeah, okay. All, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we have the annual Waterworth software for water and sewer. It's four thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. And this is a soft, and half will be paid for the saw grant. Is that right, Kristi?
Four thousand dollars will be paid for by the saw, four thousand, nine hundred and ninety.
Yes.
Is that our cost or does that represent half of it?
The two thousand, four hundred and ninety-five is for the water and we don't have that budgeted.
The forty-nine ninety, the saw grant covers ninety percent of that.
The saw grant will cover all of that, I believe.
I think that's the, I think I added that up. I think that's the total of the wastewater and then the saw grant covers ninety percent.
Right. Ninety percent of that. And we use this for forecasting?
This is budgeting software that they're using for the wastewater. And then we have the module that we can use it for water rates as well.
Okay. So it basically saves us hiring and doing state rate studies. At, those are not cheap, believe me. And it gives us more or better, quicker, accurate information as far as to make decisions on things going forward.
I have a question with that study. Are we still doing the COVID sampling?
The wastewater treatment plant, yeah. Yeah, they do. They sample whatever. It gives them an idea if there's a spike. But I know it's weekly, I believe, isn't it? Yeah, they're still doing that. Well, let me tell you, as of a month ago, they were.
One of our officers or lieutenant is doing it, right?
No, no, the wastewater treatment plant people.
I know, but we assigned.
Yeah, they give us the information. All right, where were we? Waterworth.
So I guess I just need to know if somebody, is somebody actually putting in the data to use the software?
Yeah, I'm out of that loop.
We need to get back in the loop.
Yeah.
I know they have our most current audit. Now, we're going to be next month processing another audit, which will be able to be entered once we have that data.
Was Anthony populating it?
Anthony's working with Calvin, who is our representative from Waterworth. But we also need to add in like our interceptor project, like any water or sewer projects that we have coming. Any capital equipment that we're forecasting. We need to put all of that into that so that it can accurately give us what our rate should be.
Would you feel more comfortable postponing this or?
Well, I think Anthony needs the wastewater for the saw grant.
Yes.
And our subscription expires for that in August. So I feel like we definitely need to go forward with the wastewater.
Okay.
We're getting a discount on the water. Are we going to use it? And, you know, are we going to use it the next year? I mean, we have the M twenty-nine project coming and, you know, we need to establish like a twenty-year capital improvement plan. Are we going to do that in the next year so that we can add it into the software?
Seventeen.
That's the question.
Now, wire is what, twenty-four hundred? I have no problem with the sewer part of it. Do you want to wait? I'm really not, not, like I said, in the loop on this myself.
I mean, it doesn't matter if we save fifty percent if we're not going to use it.
Right.
But then I also don't know if we are planning to use it, will they give us this fifty percent discount six months from now? I don't know.
Is this an annual fee?
Yes.
Well, I guess who would be tasked with putting the data in there?
Well, that's my point.
If we get, when we give Calvin, our representative, if we give him our audit, which we have.
They'll do it.
They'll enter the information in. But it's the supplemental information, like the capital improvement and our planned projects, that if we don't have that, we can't put that in. So, you know, he can put in our audit and he can put in the revenue that we're collecting every year. But if, so that's revenue. So it's showing the revenue going up. But if we don't put in the projects and the capital equipment that we need, then it looks like, then the rate study is going to say.
Right.
You don't need, you need to reduce your rates because you don't have any expenses coming in against all your revenues.
Yeah, well, and we know that's not true.
Right.
I'm going to make a motion that we purchase the wastewater portion of the software modules and hold off on the water portion of it until we can get a better feel on how it's going to be managed and how, and who's going to do it, too.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion? And this will give us some time to get ahold of this Calvin and everybody else to see what's entailed. Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Okay, next we have lease for a new vehicle for our fire department. It's for a Tahoe, it's going to, yeah, come on up. You can tell them what it's going to replace and.
What the Tahoe will replace is the red pickup truck that I have now. And we'll put that into our fleet. And then once our new pickup trucks come in, we will sell that truck to replace the new ones that we, that we'll be getting.
Why a Tahoe? Why SUVs?
It's.
Or is that a pickup Tahoe?
No, it's a SUV. It's similar to the.
Police.
What is that, suburban? Suburban, but it's just half that size for the fire department.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it. Why not a pickup truck?
Well, we're getting two pickup trucks sometime in the fall.
What's wrong with three? What's wrong with three?
Well, I think the issue is two are that we're not getting them for like six to eight months.
Right.
So we needed something in the meantime.
The other thing is when, if we need it for a command center, we'll have our stuff where we can work out of the back of it.
Ken, you may want, I got to tell you about this program.
I'm in.
Oh, what?
I'm in, I want to do it. I already know where you're going.
Yeah, no, seriously, just so everybody knows, we get these cars on lease and we drive them for a couple of years and we sell them. This is after we drive them for a couple of years. We sell them and we make ten, fifteen thousand dollars on a car after we use them. And it cuts our repair business way down. You know, we're not buying new tires and this and that. And we flip them and we make money in today's market. And, I mean, there's a lot of other municipalities doing this, getting into it, and everyone is great.
I'll make a motion to approve the fire department vehicle lease for a twenty twenty-two Tahoe in an annual amount of twelve thousand, thirty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. And also to amend the budget to move that twelve thousand, thirty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents from two oh six nine seventy to two oh six nine ninety nine ninety oh five, which will be aligned for the leased vehicles.
Is that new?
Support.
Yeah. Okay, have motion and support. Any discussion?
Go forward.
Hearing none. Well, we need a roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you, Chief. Next is, I've been trying to do a fall cleanup on both mainland and Harsons Island. Mterra can't give, supply us with dumpsters. They just can't. They're talking about staging, and the latest they could do is September seventeenth. And Brown's Field isn't available on that side. And just supplying us with a garbage truck, that's not going to work. We need containers. Called around, I got the best price from MGM. And it's five hundred dollars per dumpster on the mainland and six hundred and thirty per dumpster on the island. These are big forty-yard dumpsters. It is a little bit more money than Mterra. But Mterra, it was weird. They were charging us the same higher rate for a twenty-yard versus a thirty-yard versus a forty-yard. So kind of think it's almost the same. They cannot do it on Sunday, though. And the landfill's not going to be open, isn't open on Sunday either. Now, we could stage it on the island. On the mainland, we only did it on Saturday. But the island, we did Saturday and Sunday. I, my own thinking is maybe we'll just do it on Saturday on the island and call it a day, Sunday. And just, you know, it won't be open Sunday. I'm looking for like the first week in October, less we can September-ish. In the past, on the mainland, we would have three dumpsters we would fill. And this past one on the island, we filled twelve dumpsters, but that was two days, too. So my guess, we'd probably be around eight, eight or nine dumpsters on the island and two or three on the mainland. And the money, it's in our budget, we can handle it. This is just, you know, using a new company. I wanted to bring it before the board.
This nine thousand dollars was for the amount of dumpsters that we used for the last cleanup.
Right.
However, that nine thousand, sixty dollars and Mterra charged us three thousand, twenty-eight dollars for dumpsters. So that's a big difference.
Yeah, it's a difference.
Are they half the size?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're half the size, they're not the tall ones.
So does that mean, then, that we wouldn't need as many as?
So it's going to cost a little more money to do it in the fall. That's what I'm telling you. It is in the budget. It's a popular thing. Mterra can't do it for us, so.
But do you think because we had such a good turnout in the spring, this would only be the second time we're doing it in the fall?
Yeah.
We had such a good turnout in the spring. Do you think that we need to spend this much money in the fall?
There's a lot of new people on the island.
Yeah, there is.
A lot of, a lot of new people.
There's lots of stuff that needs to be cleaned up.
Yep, yep.
Which I'm not for because otherwise, you know, it just sits around and turns into blight. So if they're willing to part with it, you know, I'm glad we're willing to take it. But that's an awful lot of money difference between Mterra.
Well, it's, like I said, I called a couple of other dumpster companies. They couldn't do it. MGM said they can. And this is their quote. Very popular. It's like, on the island, it's like a frigging holiday.
Yeah.
So I want to.
Fires going and all kinds of stuff.
Well, which is fine if it doesn't turn into a trade, you know.
Right. Well, we burn a lot, too. We probably, it'd be double when you glance. Or triple. I mean, for the fire that we have going on. And then we make a big push for the hazardous materials we collect. Chief Rose does a great job with that. It's just all, it's good for our environment, it's good for everything around. I consider ourselves, we try to be good stewards of our resources and our rivers, too.
If we did, could we check to see if Mterra has availability a little earlier than the end of September or?
Well, but the problem is, the weekend before is Labor Day.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like the weekend after Labor Day?
Yeah, it's the seventeenth. Or no, no, Brown's Field's busy then. And it's actually busy the seventeenth, too, with their pig roast.
You're talking September or August?
September. You don't want to do it during the turkey shoot.
That just seems like a lot, three times the.
Well, they are bigger containers, too, though.
So Mterra offered a garbage truck?
Yeah, they parked a garbage truck there and that just will not work. Am I right, Lance?
You'd have to have about seven or ten of them in line.
Last year when we did this, we had a huge turnout, a lot of trash removed or?
Yeah, no, we did.
Did they have that grinding up? The lady from, with the grind machine?
What, the shredder?
The shredder?
Yeah, we don't.
I mean, was she there, though, to take up space? That wasn't the same day?
No, not the same.
There's so much going on at home.
Yeah.
Did you say we had that in the budget?
Yeah, it's, we got room in the budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the dumpster service for fall cleanup for MGM for $9,060.
Well, that's, we don't know how many dumpsters.
Up to $9,060.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion up to $9,060, was it?
Support.
We have motion of support. Any more discussion?
I hope it's less than that.
Yeah. And if it's more than that, what do we do? Stop bringing us your garbage?
Mm-hmm.
We'll let you do that. Okay, we have motion of support. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Me.
Okay, passes four to one. Okay, next, we have an injunctive order for demolition of a garage on Esther Green. We have a quote for $2,650. And...
An additional $35 a yard if there was debris removal needed from the inside of it?
Yeah.
An additional $1,100, concrete removal if needed.
Why do we have to remove concrete?
You got to remove the footings. It's our code. And the guy can start actually pretty quick to do it also. I think that's pretty reasonable. We use this guy for doing the house on, oh, on Field and Stone. Before, you know, we, we've used him two, three times before. So we got 26, 36, 37. You know, it's going to be under four or five grand. I mean, we, it's hard to even get anyone to quote, quote on these right now if you want additional quotes. I think it's fairly reasonable.
Yeah, well, I've been involved in it, it's cost, uh... Load, like...
Yeah. And, you know, as we've gone to court, we've gone through the whole process.
All the court documents are in place.
Yeah, and...
Can we cover the money somewhere down the road?
What's that? Yeah, we can put it on their taxes, you know.
They have 30 days to pay the invoice. If they don't pay the invoice, then it would go to the winner tax.
So... And we got an order from Judge West. So, entertaining motion. I'll make a motion. That we go ahead with approval of the demolition of a garage at 9529 Esther Green Drive for the quote of $2,650. What's the name of this company?
Eagle One Contracting.
Yes. And with additional possible costs of $35 a yard with debris removal and $1,100 for concrete removal. Is there a second?
Support.
Okay, a motion of support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? A motion carries. Okay, let's see, next we have, uh... For your consideration, a purchase of an E-mark zero-turn lawnmower. For cutting grass, and we, we need this pretty quick. I was going, I am going to also see if the DDA would pay for at least half, maybe the whole thing. But I didn't want to wait for a DDA meeting to get it approved. These are hard to get. I think Parks and Rec are ordered two, are about to order two of them. And we got ours in just before them for St. Clair County Parks and Rec. So...
I'll make a motion to approve the X-mark zero-turn lawnmower for $10,259 to be split between line item 590970 and 591970.
Support.
Okay, we have motion of support. And actually, it's a $3,000 discount because we're a municipal. It's through the, the state of Michigan discount, the state lien, same thing as what we do with our cars, so... Okay, a motion of support. Roll call, please.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, next, Lance, you're a busy man. We have, uh, another lawnmower had a, it's in good shape, but the engine blew up. And he wants to buy a new motor to put on there, where it costs $2,203.44.
Make a motion to approve the DPW X-mark engine replacement for 220344 from line 59032 and 591932.
Support.
Motion of support. And this is just another example of, you know, we're saving money by fixing this, you know, buying a new motor versus renting out and getting a new lawnmower for... It would be, this one would be probably like 15,000, wouldn't it?
I think probably right around the other one, probably 10 grand.
Yeah, about 10 grand, so... All right, uh, any more discuss, any discussion on this?
Who's going to put the motor in?
Lance will.
Need a crescent wrench?
Yeah. Probably a metric set.
Yeah, that's true.
So...
Wretched, you're a wretched.
Okay, we have motion of support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, we have, uh, for our police department. We have, the, the county is buying five of these trailers. They are L, license plate, uh, recognizable cameras, I guess they are, that are on a trailer. And they're buying five of them for about 50 grand apiece. Two, the county's buying 250 grand. And they want to give us one of them for our police department to use. Uh, there's always a hitch. Camera license fee is 250 bucks. And then you need cellular data plan, so that's 600 bucks. So it's going to cost us 850 bucks for the, a year for this. And we can park it anywhere, and it will capture license plates and make some descriptions of cars that police can use. Kind of torn on this. I, I think of too much of Big Brother sometimes. And what are we going to use this information for? I'd like to see processes and procedures in place on how we use the information and, and we're not stalking or, or, uh, doing anything that we, we're not supposed to. I know the other communities all have approved doing this. It can be a valuable tool. I think Marysville gets one, Clay Township gets one, Port Huron Police gets two.
I know the city of New Baltimore already has something similar.
They're in Baltimore, they're in Chesterfield, Marine City's buying a, a different type of a thing. They're popping up all over. I would just, before we use it, I want to see some prot, protocol, processes and procedures.
I'll make a motion for the police department
Yep.
to accept their proposal for one of their LPR trailers.
Support.
Okay, a motion of support. Any more discussion?
Could anybody steal it very easy, on a trailer?
Yeah, it is. I, 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 I'm not real sure on that myself, either. I haven't seen a picture of it. But I'm just kind of worried about, uh, I don't know. I, I think of Big Brother, and I, I, I'm going to press our, our, our police department to come up with processes and procedures.
Well, I'm sure through LexiPaul
Yes.
there has to be processes. I know when he spoke about it at our budget workshop, he said, it's taking pictures, but it's only producing data when they put a license plate number in or a model and description of what they're looking for in, which I think it has, I don't know, is it some kind of like warrant that they're putting in, or...
It's no different than they can't just walk into dispatch and run a license plate number.
Right, they have to have a valid reason to run a, a license plate number or something through dispatch.
So it's not like they're just watching it and watching to see where you're driving.
Right.
They're actually putting it in and saying, have you seen this license plate? And then it would produce.
Yeah, Lance?
In regards to the theft aspect, the other trailer that they have for the radar trailer, that is chained down. We, we got chained for that, and they chained it down.
Yeah.
And this one would actually have a camera on it, so if you're going to steal it, you better smile.
You can watch it go down the road.
And I would imagine if it has cellular data, it has some kind of GPS.
Yeah, it does, it's cellular data, too, so...
Is the camera on all the time, or only when there's a...
No, it's on all the time.
It's on all the time. And then another question is, I, I worry about, okay, is this FOIA-able?
Oh, don't.
No, I mean...
The only thing that would be FOIA-able would be something that they've pulled the information for, and that would be a case that would be
Right.
at that time FOIA-able, just like anything else evidence-wise they have over there.
But I mean, we can't get someone a FOIA request, hey, did my ex-husband drive?
No.
By, you know, I'm just...
Well, if they need a good reason to pull a license plate, you think just anybody making a FOIA can pull a license plate?
Right, hell, that's true.
So who would have authority in the dispatch to do that?
It's a database that they have to, the way he explained it at the budget workshop, it's like a statewide database.
Right.
They have to have an open, active investigation and a reason to pull anything off of that. So we do have motion and support.
We have motion of support to accept the offer from the generous offer from the county. Any more discussion? Hearing none. I probably should do a roll call, huh?
Yeah, it's a contract.
Yeah.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have the letter of understanding for patrol. As you know, their, their wages were up, we had to renegotiate. And this is a letter of understanding, an agreement, uh, that it would go in effect after our board approves it.
I'll make a motion for the board to accept the letter of understanding from the police officers' labor council for the 2223 fiscal year.
Support.
Okay, motion of support. Any discussion?
I think we've had 20.
Yeah, roll call.
Um, Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Board member comments? Cindy?
Um, our election's coming up pretty quick. If you want an absentee ballot, you can stop in the office Monday through Thursday. It's getting kind of sketchy for mailing, though, so I would stop in and pick one up. And if you have one, I would drop it off. I wouldn't mail it. Has to be here by 8 o'clock at the end of Election Day, so that's all I got.
Yeah.
Mark?
I want to compliment the entire township board and the staff, administration, and police department chiefs. We're a great July, keeping everybody safe during the numerous events that we've had. And there is a planning commission on Wednesday.
ZBA is Wednesday.
Thank you.
Joanne?
ZBA is on Wednesday. And that's about it. We have, and we sure covered a lot of stuff.
Yeah, lost going on. Kristi?
Um, tax bills were mailed the end of June. I know we've had some people that have forwarding on their tax bill have called us to say that they're having some delay. So if you haven't received your tax bill, you can definitely call the office or email, and we can get you a copy of your tax bill.
Remember, what was it, last week? We received a letter from the county for asbestos removal permit. It was mailed 2018. And we got it last week.
The envelope did look a little rough.
Oh, it was very rough. So...
That's why I said, if you have an absentee ballot, bring it into the, to the township. They have two drop boxes, one you drive up to, one you walk up to.
Yeah. All right, the only thing I have is, we're in the middle of summer, and I love it, love it, love it. Everybody have fun, but be safe. Watch out for others, there's a lot of crazies out there. And, uh, other than that, everybody have a great time. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, accepted. Thanks for coming, everybody. I got...